Ladies and gentlemen, I call the twenty-eight November Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting to order. Ms. Branch, if you'd call, roll please.
Mr. Hodge.
Here, and he's coming in to do.
Okay.
There, okay.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Mr. Miskowski.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
So I don't know if we could have a moment of silence, any special recognition this evening?
I sure do, Mr. Chair. James Jimmy Bohannon, he was a lifelong logger, actually lived in Mount Panama, passed away November the twenty-fourth at age eighty-four.
If we could rise for a moment of silence, part of the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a moment of agenda this evening, gentlemen? Hope you had time to review it. If I could get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as presented.
So, a second.
Ms. Branch.
Mr. Hodge.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Lawrence.
Hi. Okay, I'll now open it up to public comment period. This is for any topic you wish to present to the board this evening. Three minutes for individuals, five minutes per group. When you come up, if you please state your name and your district.
On non-public hearing.
Non-public hearing. We have, we have, I believe, five other public hearings this evening on the agenda, so if it's not anything to do with that, please, please come on up.
Good evening, Gordon. I'm in the second district. My name is Lisa Remington. We did do the rabies vaccination clinic a couple of weeks ago. We vaccinated one hundred and twenty-seven dogs and cats. And went very well. I think Abby Carlton for giving up her Saturday morning, Lori Bets for giving up her Saturday morning, and the animal control officers, Katie, and I didn't catch her last name, and Chrissy. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
C F Smith, I'm in the fourth district and live in Timbaland Estates subdivision. I'm sure Mr. Garber and Sheriff Walton can tell you, we have an ongoing problem with four-wheelers in that neighborhood. I'm sure y'all heard about it. And I'm here tonight, I would like to petition the Board of Supervisors to propose ordinance that would give us in private subdivisions the same civil rights as everybody else in the county and/or at least require the people with the four-wheeler to obtain written permission from their landowners to be able to ride them in the neighborhood. We own to the middle of the road, all the landowners own to the middle of the road. And it's an easement for ingress and egress to and from the property owners property. It's not a four-wheeler park. And it's just getting worse and worse. And I've got the petition, I got it, it's signed by forty-seven individuals from the neighborhood. And I got copies for y'all, if y'all would like to see them, but.
If you could leave them with Ms. Branch, she'll get on to us.
Um, they, I mean, I did a, asked for a four-year request back in the summertime. And the deputies have been called in now almost a hundred times in a one-year period for four-wheelers and noise problems. I mean, something's gotta be done. They just can't, nobody should have to live like that. And that's, that's the other thing about the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance, it says it should be unlawful for any person to make, continue, or cause to be made or continue any loud, unreasonable, unusual noise or any noise which injures or endangers the comfort, repose, health, and peace or safety of others within the county. Well, when you got four-wheelers just constantly going back and forth up the road all night long, that, that disturbs me. So I'm just asking y'all tonight, if you could propose ordinance that would help us to be able to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, you're not supposed to ask a question, but could I ask how many residents there are?
It's, uh, it's roughly thirty-nine homes and a half.
Okay.
And I went to twenty-eight of them. Some of them I couldn't catch up with. That's some of them around them. So, that's how many homes there are. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
My name Jennifer Smith, District Four. I'm also a member of Timbaland Estates. I'm actually a homeowner in there, and I do own four-wheeler that live in there. My boys actually ride the four-wheeler in there. And they are always indoors by the noise ordinance time. And he is correct. The cops have come in there many a time. But what he has not told you is that a lot of the times the calls are uncalled for. What happens is there'll be calls called in for racing four-wheelers or things like that. And not once have these boys ever sped the speed limit at fifteen miles an hour in there. But what has happened in this neighborhood, though, is there have been people hit on four-wheelers from a vehicle. There also has been people speeding in their vehicle. There also has been people in their vehicles swerving in their cars at my boys. There's also been people in there that cuss and scream and speak vulgar language at these young boys as well. So if we're going to compare things when it comes to four-wheelers that are going the speed limit, are coming in at night by midnight, or we have adults that are literally swerving in front of fifteen and sixteen-year-old boys and actually hitting a grown adult on their four-wheeler while under the influence and carrying a firearm, which one is really the thing that's the danger here? And I do have a report too.
Thank you.
If you'd like to do.
Ms. Branch, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Hey, everybody. So I'm Laura Price. Not originally from King William whatsoever, but reside in the county and my fiance is in the process of owning a house there that him and his father finished up together to be able to get for him to live in the neighborhood. We've been there since twenty-twenty. And had no real big issues regarding the four-wheelers or really any issues at all for a while. And then we became pregnant with my son in twenty-twenty-one January, and there were some issues initially at that point, but I just would like to state that the actions of a few should not dictate for all. In a perfect world, that would be great. But I think a bigger issue is the fact that when they say four-wheelers, they're, they're putting it as everybody doing the wrong thing at the same time, or at least some genre of it. And they're all, they're kids, but there's also some adults that ride and you know, there was one individual that she's at the way other end of the neighborhood, and that family gave me the most strife out of anybody. And to which there was more problems going on with them, but then because they would chase the other kids to the point of like causing them to tell me to run into mailboxes and run into the ditch. And you know, the good group is just trying to stay out of trouble. I said, well, pull up in my yard if they're gonna run you down the road and do something terrible to where you could flip or something else. Haven't had an issue with that said group that, you know, done some things we don't like, but what I don't understand is I was asked to come sign a petition. I don't have a four-wheeler. My son is the little guy that just walked away with his dad. And the whole reason I'm here is that eventually Henry's gonna be old enough to have a, Henry's gonna have a group of friends. Might have a horse, might have a four-wheeler, who knows? But I didn't feel right if I didn't at least try to stand up for some of the group, but I can understand we want peace, quiet, the whole nine yards. That's what everybody wants. But I think that first, the neighborhood should, number one, be all on the same page of who's causing what, meet up. Maybe, you know, it, it's sad that I couldn't even point them out in a crowd, my neighbors. I grew up and I knew every lady, their kids, their aunt, uncles, whomever, even if they didn't live in the neighborhood, and there's no there's just not that. And even when I have addressed to other parents, the, the family, they, they're just vulgar out the gate and protective, and I get that as a parent, but like you just make mayhem or accuse and have no concrete evidence, or if you do, but don't present it to everyone at the hole in the neighborhood and just automatically don't know if you had any problems. We have, here's what we've seen, but you have no way to back it, is my thing. And I think that there should be accountability in that. Like some form of way of proving it, I'm okay with an ordinance, but I don't think if we're just gonna fuss about that, we should fuss about the vehicles too. Because my mom's a statey and she's been.
Time's up if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom McMakeen. I live in Timbaland Estates. I'd like to add a few things. Nobody wants the kids to get in trouble and misbehave, have any safety issues. I'd like to point out a few things. This has been going on for several years now, and the association has tried to raise this to the parents, and it settles down for a little bit and then kicks right back up. These kids, you know, I understand they wanna have fun, but these lots are five-eighth a lot. There's more than enough land that they can ride on their own property. Right up at Route Thirty, there's a house, and I'm not sure, I don't think it's in our association. You can see where they run up and get the hill right at the entrance. Sooner or later, somebody's gonna be turning in off Route Thirty with a little bit of speed at the wrong time, and there's gonna be an accident right there. I personally seen these kids riding groups, two and three per vehicle, no shoes, no helmets. You know, my big thing is wanting the kids' safety, but what about the liability of the property owners in the neighborhood? I'm pretty sure it's against the law or the code or an ordinance that they're supposed to be wearing helmets. I'm pretty sure you're not allowed to ride. If this was a county of public road, they're not allowed on the street. We should be able, and it's our association that recorded with all of our property. And I believe that the property owners at the yearly meeting vote to disallow four-wheelers, but that should be honored and be able to be followed up on. You know, my big thing is I want the kids to have fun and be safe. But I don't wanna be liable for a problem, a known problem, that isn't being dealt with. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Philip Griffin. I'm actually in, uh, the gentleman that was just here speaking about the house right in front of Thirty, that's my house. My house has been there for thirty-seven years before Timbaland State was built. The only reason I don't have a Timbaland State's address is for that fact. I live on the same road. As a matter of fact, people that built the subdivision told my father, said, hey, look, let's give you on the driveway, you're gonna need access to the road. The hill he was talking about is actually on my property. We also have four-wheeler trails on my property I live on, about two acres. I get my son every other weekend. The young lady that was up here, he's actually friends with him, and they go out, they ride. There's ordinance, they come in on time, they don't cause any problems. They don't harass anybody. They don't ride up and down the road all night like someone spoke about before. Come in at a certain time, when there's a cutoff, usually around eleven or before that. Mainly at this time right now, they only ride on the weekends because they're in school. Sometimes the adults go out, ride a little bit. But it's not as bad as it's been said. They don't cause any problems. Now, they've been harassed ourselves when he, like you said, there's been people that have swerved in front of them, hit four-wheelers because they just don't want them there. The bottom line is, just don't want to see a four-wheeler. That's it. People have been riding ATVs out there for thirty-seven years. As a matter of fact, they use ATVs to take some of the building supplies to certain houses. Actually, the first thing on every was ATV. We've never had any problems. I've always ridden them out there, never had any problems till now with anybody having any problems with ATV. No. And these are good kids. They're not out playing with guns, not playing video games or out, you know, riding. They're not, it's not up and down, up and down a road. I'm just gonna say, I'm not gonna say the name of the gentleman here, he's right. They're having, the police has been called. Every time they're called, I see the same faces. I mean, it's easy to go around and get a petition and have twenty of your friends sign something. He didn't go to any houses that had, that people had four-wheelers. None. I mean, what does that tell you? He was also talking to, his wife was also talking to a lady last night. When she didn't want to comply on Messenger and Facebook, she blocked her. She didn't want to sign a petition. She blocked her. That's what we're dealing with. The same person came into my yard on a two o'clock during, during the middle of the summer, when people are cutting the grass and weed eating. I said, my son was playing his music too loud on his four-wheeler, on a, oh, a DeWalt work radio on his four-wheeler, right by his house. Asked me to have him turn it down. If somebody would have been walking by with a radio in their hand, they wouldn't have said nothing about it, but because it was on a four-wheeler, that was the issue. Also, I'm sorry.
Anyone else this evening?
Good evening. Mary Sue Bancroft, the district. So it's been a little over two months since I vacated my position as treasurer, and the treasurer currently, Abby Carlton, has just today hired one full-time person. So for two months, she's been in that office by herself. She's had to close the office numerous times just to handle important business. You all frowned upon the office being closed for Mr. Ashcraft. You even went so far as to write a letter to the judge explaining that as well, and how you were dissatisfied with the job I was doing and that you had no confidence in her. And as you can see, for the last two months, she's been by herself and has done a magnificent job. For you all to have asked the judge to disobey the Virginia Code, to not appoint her as the treasurer was just unacceptable. I, I don't even know how you all came to that decision, to ask a judge to go against the Code of Virginia. I, I, it's just incomprehensible to me. If you all have not made an amendment to her budget, and I don't believe that you have made an official amendment, she is entitled to two full-time persons and a part-time person. That is what it takes to run that department. That department and the Commissioner of Revenue's office brings in seventy percent of the revenue to this county. That is the good majority of the money. And they do a heck of a job. For you all to have her in there by herself for two months, she's not been able to do as an effective job as she should be able to do, nor is it for audit purposes a good idea for her to be in there by herself for two months. That is very frowned upon. I think you all know this. So if it's still in her budget, she should be able to have two full-times and a part-time person. I wish y'all would really reconsider what she really needs. I don't think any of you all have gone in there, have talked to her personally, have sat down and watched anything that goes on in that office. I'm fairly certain you have not. But I think that's the least that you all could do, is to have a talk with her. Sit down, talk with her. You're allowed to do that as Board Supervisor members. I know you are. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
There we go. I wanna say something about the Timbaland Estates issue. The whole neighborhood is private property.
Your name, sir?
Brian Means. I live in the neighborhood. The whole neighborhood's private property. It's constantly been called on numerous times. They said there's nothing they can do. It's gotta be up to the landowner or for the state or the county to overtake that property. So I don't even know why. It's an issue right now. That's all I'm saying.
Hello. My name is Lucy Archer. I'm from the second district. I don't know if this is the right form. I need, I wanna talk to somebody about the taxes. My question is, I'm not really concerned about the cars, but I have a John boat that I bought four years ago. And I paid forty-eight hundred dollars for this John boat. And the city or county has now assessed my John boat for sixty-nine hundred and thirty dollars. Now, I remember my life seeing any boats that ever appreciate, much less appreciate, almost double. And I don't understand why it would go up that much. I paid ninety-four dollars in taxes last year, and now they want me to pay over two hundred dollars in taxes for a John boat. I understand we don't have much control over the cars. You know, it's about this, it's about that, I get that. But this is a boat. It's not a car. I don't understand why the value would go up so much. It was valued, assessed last year at two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This year, it's assessed at six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for a fifteen-foot John boat. I would just like somebody to please explain that to me. I called the Commissioner's office. They told me that it's a third party that assesses that. I was given no name, but I would like to know who that is that assesses the boat and discount.
Yeah, I mean, the Commissioner's is the one that, that, you know, is in charge of assessing the properties, but, and she is over there. Hi, Karina. I'm happy to answer this one if you want, because I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Do you wanna, do you wanna approach and field it? Go ahead. Okay.
This year, I'm sorry, this year, the office used a service to assess the boat. We do not have complete boat descriptions and of all the boats. And he may, yeah, kind of infer what it might be, and it depends on the loader and the length of the boat. Some of the lengths were done, and I know three people have complained about their boats. I sent it to the man from the service, and he explained different things that I was able to change the assessment. But I don't know that I have seen yours. I mean, so if you wanna do, I can certainly approach him and email and say, I show him a copy of the screen where we have it assessed. One person had a twenty-four foot boat, and they said, this model doesn't, is maximum size is eighteen feet. They need to make influences. So I know I changed three boats. But, anyhow, if you don't contact me, I don't know to ask to change.
I did contact Commissioner's office. What I was told is it's a third party and we have nothing we can do about it. That's what I was told.
All right. Well, I can, well, I am the person and I can do something about it.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I have a card. You can email me the information.
Okay.
I will forward it to the person from the company that assessed it, and he'll respond, and I should have something back to you by the end of the week.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you.
Last chance. Anyone else? We'll enclose public comment period. Thank you, everyone, for your comments.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we move on, just, just on, on the matter that was, that was brought to our attention there in the public comment period, can we, can we ask that we do some more research on that? And maybe bring this back at either the December or the January work session, whichever is more practical for you. And the administration, if we can work, you know, talk with Sheriff Walton about what experience they've, they've got out there, and then look at what yeah, the actual covenants are and whatnot, because it is, it is probably accurate that if it's all private road, there's probably that limitation on, on what can and cannot be done there from, from our standpoint.
I think, I think the only, the only codes and covenants are pertaining to the road itself. It's, it's a maintenance agreement. Am I, am I mistaken? I owned a lot in there at one time, so I'm pretty familiar with that. But yeah, I would like to, you know, of course, to have a conversation to see if it's anything that we can do.
Can we comment? But that's the only thing I know that you, we, I talked to Sheriff earlier today, and I'm not talking to him. I'm talking to Bill Hodges, is, is no trespassing. And you have to do it on your property and on your five acres and then cut it off. I don't think that's what the majority want to do yet.
Oh, I've.
You've got a mix of folks that want the service or the ability to operate.
They, they. Petition, I, I. They want an ordinance change or something similar to that, but so far as the trespassing goes, you can file a complaint, individual landowner can file a complaint. They have to pursue it. I've, I filed a trespass and a complaint myself. And I had to pursue it. I had to appear in court and give testimony. That's always an option to.
But they've got to be notified prior to charge. You can't just, you have to. You can't just, you have to do it because of usual problems.
Sure, sure. And we can cover all this.
Yeah. Anyway.
When we, when we return to it, maybe with some attorney background on it as well and discuss at a future date, but soon, as soon as practical.
Yeah.
So.
I'd say December, January work session.
Okay.
Right around the corner.
Okay.
Might need a little more time.
Understood. Okay.
All right, we're up to the consent agenda, if I could get a motion.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, approval of the consent agenda.
Sure. We have a motion and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Mascalfi?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Chairman Morton?
Hi. Next up, we have Mr. Pearson for a monthly update. We're looking forward to it. And for those of you in the audience, Mr. Pearson owns the appraisal company that's doing our reassessments.
Thank you very much. We're getting close to holding hearings. As my understanding, we called the printers today that notices anticipate mailing this out Friday. We'll be available. We have, I think Steve's got us set up with three lines coming in. We have three people answering the phone setting up appointments and hopefully we get started next week on holding hearings. All the information, all the property records on visions, all our appraisal information should be online where people can go to the county's website and get the link off of that to look at their property record cards. Steve, when's the last day to call to make an appointment?
Things around the. With you or?
With, with, yeah.
The last day to make an appointment with you is December twenty-third.
Yeah, so they have to, December twenty-third. If they, there's three ways that they can fill their assessment. They can do it in person. If they would like to set up a phone appointment, we can call them back. Will we have to do that? And also too, they can email us information they'd like us to consider. But you're getting a very large increase. Should be quite a few appeals.
Is it, is there an average? Is it seven, I'm hearing seventy-five most. Also seeing where houses are selling that much also, it's same thing.
Some of the highest I see is eighty percent.
Was commercial much higher?
You've got some large increases on your industrial properties here. Some of your commercials took increases, not that much. Most of, most of your increases in residential properties than industrial property.
I mean, no, no real questions for you. You've been great throughout this entire process and we appreciate the transparency that you've given us. And it might be a good time to, Mr. Chairman, since we've got some publicly we don't normally see at the monthly meetings to talk about, you know, what, what this assessment's looking like and what this board has pledged to accomplish on the backend of it, which I'm happy to let you do if you'd like, please. As Mr. Pearson's pointed out, for those of you who aren't regularly in the audience with us, we're doing, we're doing a reassessment right now. Shouldn't be shocking. The real estate market has been, you know, incredibly hot nationwide and around here for the last couple of years. So, you know, we're looking at some property values that will probably increase dramatically. Now, the board's been aware of this for some time now. And what we continuously pledge to do is when, you know, whatever that final average number comes in at, whatever it be fifty, sixty, seventy percent increases, the tax rate will be equalized. And what that means is, is that on average, you know, property owner in King William County should not be paying any, any more in taxes next year than they are this year. There'll be exceptions if you've added things to your property. Certain, you know, pieces of property that may have gone up more than the average. Some will go up less than the average and will end up paying less at the bell curve. But on, on average, you should, you should end up paying substantially the same amount of tax that you're paying this year. That's what this board has pledged to do from the beginning of this process, knowing that that number was going to go up. But by whatever number that went up, we, we were all on board with making sure that we equalize that rate, not trying to realize some drastic increase in revenue off.
And just to reemphasize, realize that we haven't had an assessment since 2015. So we all know that, that things have increased significantly since then, but you've been paying that same rate for eight years. So no consolation, but that's the fact.
So I guess the point of that is you'll get your notice soon. Mr. Pearson just said it's going to be going out within a week or so. And you might see a number that says that your property value increased by fifty-six and seventy percent. But know that that does not mean that your tax bill next year is going to go up by that amount. It will not. At the same time, if you receive your assessment notice and you feel that there is an error or if you look at your property card and something is not accurately assessed, size, quantity, condition, et cetera, please contact Mr. Pearson's office and they will have a meeting with you and correct anything that needs to be corrected.
We want to make sure everybody gets a fair and equitable assessment. If we've got something wrong, I want to be the first person to correct it.
And also, there's three levels. So Mr. Pearson has your first level. Number two would be the Board of Equalization, which we're putting together this evening. We'll be voting on that, that group, finalize that cadre. And then the last level will be the circuit court judge. So you have every, a lot of opportunities to get your points across if there is an error or, or something that's not clear.
My thoughts are that there might be an increase, but it should be on the lower.
It's not based, it's not based on today's tax.
No, that is not. But I, I can't see it's not being some slight increase, whether it be less than one percent. I don't know. A lot of increases on the ones that are over whatever percentage we said. If it's fifty percent that we said that and some people are a hundred, a hundred and fifty percent increase, they're going to pay the extra. That's what I wanted to bring up.
Well, right. And that's definitely my point in saying that it's a bell curve. So some, some will land ahead of that, some will land behind it. But the majority should land near it.
Yeah. But Mr. Hodges, if you able to find out any of those issues I mentioned to you, because I'm going to bring them out in public and issue dirty laundry. But if you've talked about it, I'll talk to you later.
We'll talk.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, well, we can't.
Just the question of this one too. Y'all, we won't talk about it because I don't want to bring it up. I'll talk to you later.
Let's, I'll just say whatever, any issue that has been brought to Mr. Pearson's attention, his people have addressed promptly.
And we're going to do that with everybody else too. We're going to just try to be as fair with everybody as I can. When people come in, I'll listen. And I want to find out about their property. We do not make interior inspections. I ask them about the interior of their homes and what problems they may have.
You're using sales also.
Yes, sir. We have a list of sales out there. If anybody to look at, all the information we have is available. I have a list by each district from the highest priced home to the lowest priced home that's sold. If we've got that, we've got land sales. So I, I think we, we've done the job the best that we can.
I, I knew one that was appraised at two-seventy in 2015 and they just sold it to four hundred and twenty. So that's why I said that there might be.
Can I write that down?
That's what I wanted to ask too.
I'm just kidding with you.
Pay a hundred thousand dollars more than asking price and sells for that. How, how does that affect the whole system?
We, we take, we, we look at an average. We, you've got some high ones, you've got some low ones and we try to use as many sales as we can. We kind of take.
They must have.
We've had a lot of sales. We've had a lot of sales here.
Everybody. It's only two thousand eight.
That's correct. That's because you don't look back to, to those values too much.
Yeah. But they are paying way more. And, but again, most homeowners would not sell. I know we wouldn't sell our house for what it's priced at.
Wait until you get your notice.
I know. Oh, I know.
No, it's.
I know what it is already.
I'm sure a lot, I've been offered a lot of real estate here. But anyway, like I said, I'm, I'm going to listen to everybody and just try to be as fair with them as I can. No one, I don't want anybody to walk out there going, said he didn't listen to me.
In, in the future, I think I speak to the board. We, we hope not to let this much time to go again. Because that's what's really making so dramatic of an increase.
The larger the increase, the more appeals you have.
Yeah.
Do you have an average amount of time that your, your folks spend?
Fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes per person.
For planning purposes.
That's what we schedule.
So have your, have your evidence come in ready to start?
Ready.
And when will the bills get written?
Oh, well, the notices will come out.
I said bills, it's not.
The notices are going out, as I suppose to be mailed Friday. I would assume people are starting getting them this weekend, maybe Saturday, if not Monday, Tuesday next week. So as soon as, you know, we'll have people available to answer the phones and set up performance. Since we start getting a performance, then we start holding hearings. And we'll have enough people and make sure we get it done in a reasonable amount of time.
Kind of an off-the-wall question, but would you consider Saturdays?
Yeah. I don't have a problem with Saturday. I work all the time anyway. I have no problems. If it's a night meeting, people don't want to come during the day because they're working, they want to come at night. I have a problem setting up meetings at night too. Whatever works.
You're talking about meeting on Saturday, but not being open on Saturday, correct? If they need to have a meeting. Like, like it's going out Friday, you're not setting up on a Saturday on the phone.
No. But if you'd like for me to set up a day that we can set up, like on a Saturday, I'll come in Saturday morning. Here, anybody wants to come in on a Saturday, I don't have a problem doing that.
We'll see how it goes.
If.
It's how it goes.
If someone requests an onsite visit?
Yes.
You will do that?
I have no problems with that.
He's always said that. They would.
Right. We'll be happy to. Sometimes, you know, if someone asks me to go inside their house, I may want to represent it from the kitchen and go with me inside. But besides that, I'd be happy to.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Sheriff Walton to talk about the Rappahannock Regional Criminal Justice Training Academy.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm not sure whether I'm going to speak on this tonight or not, because it's my understanding that we may vice of the attorney to a table this or move it. I have some thoughts though, that I shared with the attorney earlier today. I don't know if you want to hear my thoughts or not, probably not.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. Sheriff Walton did demonstrate great patience with me on the phone earlier. Our, our recommendation is to postpone consideration of this item till at least your meeting in December. The, the final language of this charter agreement is still, I think, being worked out. We want to ensure that the intent of this criminal justice training academy in, in changing the charter amendment, those, those intents are put into practice in, in the actual amendments. And, and we also had some concerns with the addition of some language dealing with how debt service is going to be handled for members, which would include King William County. So we're, we're still in communication with the executive director and some of the other localities. And our recommendation is for you to postpone consideration of this at this time.
Mr. Chair, always been told if we pay them, we ought to go by what you say.
One more time?
The attorneys. If we pay them, we ought to go by what you say.
Well, yeah, I, I just, I asked Sheriff Walton to come up. Just, I want to make sure that we, delaying this is not going to affect significant. We're, we're going to continue with the academy.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think we're bound to, because we're in that region. The annual meeting is coming up December the third or fourth, sometimes real soon, like next week or so. And they're going to vote on that. You know, as I talked to the director this afternoon, you know, the possibility could be that they go forward to vote as is with the majority of other departments or agencies, the counties and cities that are participants to vote for this. And then we'd be left, I mean, we're still going to have to do it anyway. Maybe not. I, I mean, the legal jargon, that's more his.
That's correct. Under the current charter agreement, it takes a three-fourths majority to amend the charter of participating agencies, whether it be localities or otherwise.
So there, there are other localities that have an issue with this, correct? King and Queen.
There's also another one that I know of that has brought attention to the academy and that's King and Queen. At least that's what the director tells me.
I'm aware of a couple, King, King and Queens in one of them.
You know, I know one of the concerns is, is the possibility of debt service that the academy could incur. And I just want to point out that we already have, have done that. We've been a part of this academy since nineteen seventy-eight. We have incurred that. We've just, we've built a building twice, two builds now. And we are getting ready to pay off the last note in this next fiscal budget that we're all working on now. There was never an issue with that, but that was the way the charter was written. You know, it's almost like we, we were trying to do the right thing by rewriting the charter to be more inclusive of, of folks. And in doing so, we've opened up this, this Pandora's box that now we've created more of a problem. If we'd left it alone, nobody would have changed anything. We would continue on with, with the thing. I'm not saying that the proposal is one-hundred percent perfect, you know, it's, it's probably needs to be tweaked a little bit. But I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, the majority is going to rule. And if we, we continue to put this off, it may very well get voted on. I don't know. That's anyway.
It could happen either way.
It could happen either way. So, sure. You know, as I told, I'm sorry, what is your last name, sir?
It's Haleben, but Max is fine.
Max, as I told Max earlier today, you know, you know, I'm, I'm okay if you want, if you wanted to defer this for another month. But, but the vote may come early on.
But they have, they have agreed to modify the, the terms.
They have, and they sent out an amended version of it today. But I don't think that's meets what we're looking for, what attorneys are looking for.
Have you recommended language?
We have recommended not specific language on the charter amend, or the charter agreement amendment. I've made some modifications today. I've run those by Andrew, but as you all know, he's, he's been out for some professional engagements. So we have not sent those back to executive director yet.
Sometimes, of course, it's easier to just tell them what to put in there than.
Absolutely. And it is really a big vote to turn. It's a great academy, but it's got a lot of members and all public bodies essentially. So when you start opening up sort of the governing documents of an agency like that, it gets unwieldy very quickly. So we're trying to be respectful of the intent and being inclusive while still protecting the, you know, financial interests of the participating members. It's a tricky vote to turn.
Is a letter of intent or something similar to that feasible?
It is.
Does it do any good?
Charter amendments are complicated in that each, they have to pass by the super majority, but each locality is supposed to vote on the amendments themselves. So in theory, all of these agencies and political subdivisions should be looking at the same document and say, yes, we would like this regional partnership to be governed by this new agreement. It's already been looked at, a couple of versions have been looked at by different governing bodies. So we were trying to figure out a way to get a complete comprehensive agreement that accomplishes what the executive director would like to accomplish while still checks King, King William County. And then get that in front of all of the members for adoption. It is a tricky endeavor, certainly.
Mr. Hodges, this will be on our work session for December?
If.
That's the goal?
That's what.
Well, we're, because Jeff made the same point that I made at, at the end of the last meeting, which was the, the goal of this charter rewrite, you know, what was to democratize the, with the organization or further democratize the organization, give more voting power to members who joined post original charter. And the language that we are kicking around and having a real hard time with is, to my understanding, not new. Right? So, I mean, where, Steve, have you heard anything from LGA members? We're talking about anybody that's having a problem with it. We know King and Queen raised a bill, real big class about it, but any, anybody else at the LGA?
I've only heard from King and Queen.
Right. So I, I don't know. This seems like completely unnecessarily muddy to me at this point. Is, is how it strikes. Um, is, is how it strikes me.
Boil it down, we're, new members having the right to vote could affect the, since nineteen seventy-eight, how things have gone all this time with all these new voting members. Correct?
Well, not for this, the first meeting is coming up, it would be the same way it has always been. After that, if it's passed, then they would all have equal say.
And we don't want to get locked into a situation where we could be at a disadvantage. You know, overstate it up?
Well, we need to listen, listen to sound legal advice. He came to the same conclusion that, that, uh, Mr. McRoberts came to. And we pay a lot of money for our attorneys. It is about protection. If it's any, if it's any possibility that something could happen, and it is a remote possibility that something could happen with this, this agreement, why would we not wait? We informed them probably two weeks ago that, that we had an issue with it. And I mean, but I just can't say anything else other than, uh, try to straighten up the, the literature in it and, uh, and they seem perfectly willing to do it. It's not like we are.
I'm sorry. The director is, is doing that. That doesn't mean that the other localities is going to agree to the changes that King William and King.
You, you don't think that they will if it, if it physically protects them?
I, I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know. Some of them have already signed the agreement the way it was and ready to go. But, you know, you take the advice of your attorney, that's what we're here for. I'm just, you ask my opinion, I'm telling you my opinion.
Let me, let me ask you this. You and Andrew have already decided on some kind of verbiage, correct?
We have drafted verbiage that I, I think improves the agreement and addresses the concerns of how to handle the um, debt service and the fiscal responsibility that accompany that in the event that there is changes in membership over time.
Why don't we send them that before this meet? If they're good, gonna have.
We start, huh? We start voting approval.
Well, the, the intent is that we would be working with the executive director to amend the language that he had proposed in order for the academy's board to consider that at its December meeting. If the academy says we would like to amend, if we want to adopt this amendment, then the, uh, participating member localities and, and other governmental units could adopt that as a charter amendment unless I'm mistaken in the process and they're intending for three quarters of the governing bodies to have adopted the charter amendment before the December.
I think that's what their thought process is.
Okay.
Okay, in a lot of ways, it's a whole lot of rubber stamping going on. So that's it, red the face.
Well, you think that's bad. I mean, one of the things that, uh, I saw mentioned is the approval of a budget. For every locality to approve the academy's budget that, that is done by committee and present, kind of like the jail board does, present a budget. If, if every locality had to put on a budget that the academy does, people get, I forget what they said, the number was nearly forty agencies or localities to agree.
Forty different budgets.
Well, but again, Pandora's box is what.
Okay.
Yeah, there. We could go, we could talk all night. I mean, it's, it's a fascinating topic, but there are a number of changes in certain charter. There are a number of changes in the, in the proposed uh, amendment that are different, different from just including new voting members. Um, that deal with how the debt is going to be managed and what the allocation of that is in the particular budget that's adopted each year. So we want to make sure that's very neatly and cleanly laid out is how those financial responsibilities are going to be allocated.
Do you have a timeline in mind that you can get this accomplished?
I would be hopeful that it would be by the end of the week.
That's the day they're voting, right?
It's right after Thursday. I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the date is. I was looking to see if I had it written down, but I don't know.
Oh, I know what you said.
I thought it was, but that's, that's going to be on Saturday.
Okay. I could, uh, entertain a motion to delay this decision until counsel has provided.
Motion to delay the decision until counsel has provided proper, or I don't know what the word would be.
I think just motion to table.
Motion to table.
Exactly. Have a motion to table properly second, Ms. Branch.
Ms. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Same.
Mr. Hedges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Okay, we'll, uh, keep the pressure up and try to get this done as soon as possible. Now we move on to the public hearing. We have five pub, I'm sorry, four public hearings this evening. First one is Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-eight approving the conditional use permit for Liberty Hall to, uh, erect a, um, boathouse and ramp. Ms. Graham. If you could preface the, uh.
Good evening. So on November first, the planning commission held a public hearing to hear the case for Mr. Gottwald, which is Liberty Hall. Um, for him to have a thirty-three by thirty-eight covered boathouse on property at fifty-two thirty-nine Green Level Road. Uh, Mr. Gottwald, he owns quite a bit of property on both sides. Um, not close to any one. He's not going out, um, to block any navigable waters or anything. He is still close to shore. Um, they voted to approve it with the following conditions, um, that the proposed work meet all of the requirements in state and local agencies. Um, all work to be completed within two years of the approval date or the permit becomes invalid and the applicant would need to reapply. And he must obtain the approval from the Corps of Engineers and VMRC. So. I'm not sure, Mr. Gottwald.
Mr. Gottwald, are you in the audience? Recognizing, okay.
I didn't do a PowerPoint, but I have one left over from, um, the planning commission. If you want to see mapping or anything, but it would be the same, uh, pictures that you received in your packet.
Is your package information valid?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
We did not receive any opposition, um, on the CUP.
Okay.
And the Army Corps and Marines have to approve.
Before he gets a building permit, he has to have approval from, uh, VMRC, the local board, um, and the Corps of Engineers.
Do you engage that or does he engage that?
He fills out a joint permit application and that goes to VMRC, um, and the Corps and to the local board. And he gets approval from all three agencies. Um, as far as, I know VMRC is the only other person that's going to hold a public hearing on this.
Usually, it used to be, the, the process now, I don't know, but it used to be the, VMRC would say that it's outside of their realm of jurisdiction, Army Corps of Engineers does. And, you know, the, the, the projects that I've been involved with, is, is that still the same process?
Well, lately VMRC has been holding, um, public hearings on just about everything that's gone through them. Um, unless it's a commercial project, the Corps usually, so that they qualify for their region permit. Um, and because this is an open pile structure, they won't need approval from the local board.
You heard if they heard anything back from the, because that's been about a month now. I didn't.
I haven't seen anything come through as far as the approval shed.
Just curious.
It, it takes a few months to get them.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Graham. I'll now open it up to public comment, same rules as before, single individuals. Uh, you have three minutes. Please state your name and your district. Groups have five minutes. Public hearing is now open for Resolution twenty-two ninety-eight. Anyone online, Ms. Branch? Seeing no one come forward, I'll now close the public comment period for Resolution twenty-two ninety-eight.
Mr. Chairman, approval of Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-eight.
Second.
I have a motion to approve twenty-two ninety-eight properly second. Any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Branch, if you call roll.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hedges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Next up, Mr. Hudson, I believe this is yours, uh, ordinance zero-two dash twenty-two C corrections to errors and polling locations and street name.
Correct. Um, as we discussed previously, um, the voting locations, uh, have never been updated from years ago. So even though we just had a successful election, um, those polling locations aren't exactly what we have in our ordinance. So this is to modify them to actually reflect what everyone knows is, as is their polling location. Um, there was also, uh, a noted, uh, correction to a, a road name within the district boundaries, but no substantive changes.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I'll now open up the review of ordinance twenty, zero-two dash twenty-two, public hearing. And just to double check. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Ordnance zero-two dash twenty-two C.
Mr. Chair, I moved, we approve ordinance zero-two twenty-two C, correct, second.
I have a motion properly second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Hedges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Next, we have ordinance one-one dash twenty-two, update property maintenance ordinance to comply with state code. Review, Mr. Chair.
If this was, um, brought before you at your last meeting, um, and basically what we have done is we have taken a lot of the, um, information out of the current ordinance. Um, and then just referenced the Virginia Maintenance Code, which has a lot, most of what we had taken out, the definitions and requirements and so forth. With the exception of weeds, debris, and inoperative vehicles. Uh, the Virginia Maintenance Code does not cover those, so we did, uh, leave those items in, um, the ordinance. And.
What page is that on? We, oh, oh, you're talking about that. I was just wondering.
And we, right now, we're in the two thousand eighteen Virginia Maintenance Code. Um, but we left the two thousand eighteen out. So we did not have to come back every three years when the ordinance, um, when the codes change. It's still incorporated under the Virginia Maintenance Code. Uh, we did change the timeframe on weeds where it was taking, what, ninety days? Uh, for weeds and debris and in op vehicles, we did change that.
Mr. Governor, some line, one thirty-six, but halfway down, specific for weeds, item G.
That's it.
And again, these, I've asked this before, these are complaint driven. You don't ride around the county looking for violations?
No, they are complaint driven. Um, we are trying to clean up the corridors of that, but, um, for the most part, if we get a complaint, we do go out there and, um, verify that there is or is not a violation.
Yes, that's a very long process, too.
It, it has been, especially if we have to go to court, it will take a few months.
More than that. I've got a couple in my district that are still, uh, outstanding. Probably been close to a year, probably.
Well, I know one, and I'll be glad to talk to you afterwards. Um, we did have him in court, cleaned up. Um, but he is repetitive, bringing stuff back, and we are going to court again.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, Ms. Graham. Are you up for the next one as well?
I'm sorry?
Are you up for the, uh, King William Code section?
The what?
License fee exemptions, is that yours also?
That's not me.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for a public hearing for ordinance one-one dash twenty-two, property maintenance ordinance. I know these are exciting ordinances for everyone, but seeing no one come forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve ordinance eleven twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and properly second. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch, if you call roll.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hedges.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. And last, we have, uh, a public hearing on ordinance thirteen dash twenty-two, update King William County Code section. Mr. Hudson, is that yours?
It's actually more of a commissioner item, um, but I introduced this, um, at the work sessions. We've already discussed, and really, it's just a clarifying the process and cleaning up the process for, um, applying for exemptions to, um, license fees for volunteer, uh, firing EMS. Putting it more on, on the station chief to make sure that these people are, want the exemption and, um, are active members of the organization.
Maintaining proper qualifications.
Correct.
So they only have to submit one letter.
Right.
With all, that's, that's.
That's. I'm sorry. Is it in here? Is it as of one January of the or the fiscal year or the calendar year?
Calendar.
Count. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, last one. I'll open it up for public hearing on ordinance one-three dash twenty-two, King William County Code section. And again, seeing no one come forward, I'll now close the public hearing period.
Mr. Chair, I moved, we approve ordinance thirteen dash twenty-two.
We have a motion to approve properly second, Ms. Branch.
Ms. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hedges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. All right, coming into new business, we have, uh, Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-nine. Men the capital improvement plan for funds to reimburse West Point Fire Department. Ms. Brown.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
West Point Fire, uh, West Point Volunteer Fire Department has requested a total of eighty thousand dollars from capital funds to reimburse for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-two medic within FY twenty-three's capital budget. The board had appropriated fifty thousand. Uh, Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-nine is presented tonight for the board's consideration to appropriate capital funds balance from FY twenty-two of thirty thousand dollars that was not utilized by West Point Volunteer Fire Department in FY twenty-two. It remains in the capital fund and really right now, all we're doing is asking the board to appropriate those funds to roll forward into FY twenty-three's budget.
The money that's already been allocated, just not appropriated.
Exactly. Um, when we were putting together, together the budget for FY twenty-three, it's possible at that time, they thought they had a, a use for that thirty thousand, you know, and, and so what has happened is they never did have a use for it. So now it's available for them to roll forward.
It's, it's a beautiful unit. I was down there the day that it delivered, uh, to our end of station. And, uh, really nice.
Mr. Chair, I moved, we approve Resolution twenty-two days ninety-nine.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-nine properly second, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hedges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks.
We have VIPSa budget discussion, Mr. Hudson.
I wanted to bring to your attention, um, the ongoing budget discussions and seem to be, uh, budget approval by the VIPSa Board, um, at their upcoming meeting, uh, later this week. Um, a week ago, I had, uh, meeting as, uh, part of the committee, the Oversight Committee of VIPSa to discuss, uh, their upcoming budget and, uh, the increases that will be proposed. So I just wanted to bring those to your attention and, uh, kind of get your comments on that. Uh, starting now as the vote will be uh coming up this week. That does not mean that King William County is locked into that, that just means that that is going to be the VIPSa budget proposal. The uh increase, total increase in King William is coming out to. Sorry.
Little bit over, a little bit over one hundred seventy-three thousand, is what that looks like.
Yeah, a hundred, and let's see. An increase of a hundred ninety-nine thousand. Um, eighteen point five two percent. When we were first uh showed the numbers. Um, at this previous meeting, uh, King William's increase was actually at twenty-two percent. Um, so. Uh, myself and the other members of the Oversight Committee have proposed um to. Lessen that a bit, so it's not quite such a, a big step at this time. Um, the main reasons for the increase uh over this current budget year have to do with the cost of gas and the cost of equipment. Um, there are some new um. Personnel requests that are going into this. One of the ones that would increase solely for King William would be uh an additional attendant at uh the high school transfer site. Once the expansion is completed. Um, so that is part of the budget, um, but there's also um. A proposed assistant supervisor. Um, and a welding and machinist uh to upkeep on a lot of the containers. Um. But besides that, uh, the, the increase that did come down, the way he does it, VIPSa and David Magnet, the director. They have a capital fund that rolls forward. Um, equipment costs have been calculated for years and. He adds up all the costs, divides by the number of years of life expectancy, and that's what the cost is, and it just built over time, knowing that they will have to be replaced. That hadn't been looked at in a while, when he looked at it, the cost of equipment have gone up tremendously. Um, we don't have any huge uh capital purchase that we're about to make is VIPSa. Um. So that was what we asked to, let's step that a little bit. Um, in the coming years, even though we know it's a cost that we're gonna have to come up with at some point, but instead of saying a, a huge increase there, but um. Bite it off a little bit smaller at a time, so that's where we're at right now, so any comments?
Yeah, what I was referring to actually is the largest item, which is transfer station operation. That's a little bit over a hundred, that's a lion's share of the, the increase right there. That's somewhere around a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar increase just in the operation.
I also, I believe um the operation had um. One of the administrative positions switched from. Uh, transfer to operation or a split instead of just coming out of one or the other. So it might have gone up um more in that. Whereas the. Uh, convenience center operation didn't go up nearly so much, and um I think that's one of the reasons why.
Comparing to other counties, is this raised, increases comparable across?
Comparable and in fact better. Um, I was talking to a fellow county administrator. At the VACO conference who has their own. Uh, or I guess they contract with a company to do it instead of a, a regional authority. And uh, this particular administrator has been asking for years to get into VIPSa because it's a better deal, and he was looking at cost increases of thirty percent this year. Right now, this current fiscal year, he uh David Magnet budgeted for four dollar gas. He's paying five forty right now. This increased budget is set at a five dollar gas.
I assume ninety-nine percent diesel?
Yeah.
If not all.
As ever, I assume that, that, you know. Basically, from this number now to reduce this, we're looking at service hour reductions. That's pretty much it, unless, yeah, unless uh as a board, uh, as a VIPSa board. Uh, everyone voted down on any of the uh increased positions. But from what I've seen and the other board members, they all think that they are worthwhile positions, and they're not coming with the increase that these other items are.
Not the year to ask for additional days, I see.
It would appear not. Um, just a quick calculation, it's about forty thousand dollars per site in the county. You know, um. Is it, it's not, obviously, not the entire. Overall operating budget.
You, you mentioned something about a welding.
Yes.
Is that something that they don't have now? What do they have?
They have.
A mobile, a welder that's servicing now or?
I think they, he said in FY twenty-three, they proposed two mechanics and. For FY twenty-four, they're asking for a third, this, this one.
On-site mechanics, just, just for this county or?
No, that would be for the system.
So they would be mobile.
Right, because I think they're working a lot on the containers that hold. Uh, the trash before it gets sent out into all kinds of places across the country. Um, but they only do that in large batches, so they hold from all over the uh. System.
So that's actually a third shop, not mobile.
Could be, and they've got it, so they, they, they finished up last year, they were for, so um. I'm sure it's a mixed vote, because I'm sure there's some onsite stuff, like compactors and stuff, and they've worked at where they are, so. It's both. I just wanted to make you aware, and if there are any further comments uh that I could take to the VIPSa Board. Um, I'd be happy to do so.
When, when's your next meeting?
Um. Friday.
I want to show up in the fence.
Fuel costs were miraculous, soon to come down, it would help. I don't think that's gonna happen.
Doesn't look like it.
Any other questions or comments, recommendations for Mister Hudson to take?
Diesel's not coming down, it didn't seem, I mean, it'll drop the pin and go up in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Branch, gonna take us through the ordinance changes needed for hearings on the Board of Equalization.
In the process of creating the um. The reassessment notices that will be going out and trying to coordinate all the dates. Uh, we discovered that the King William County Code currently. Um. Says that the Board of Equalization. Has to conclude its work by April first of the year in which it was appointed. However, due to some of the dates, um. It's possible that the final um hearings can't even be held until after that date. Um, if someone were to. To ask for a hearing on the, on the last day, which is March third. State code requires that they be given forty-five day notice prior to the scheduling of their date. That would put us at April twenty-fourth. So it's possible that the board um might not be able to conclude its work by April first. So we're proposing that we just remove that one section of um the code that says. April first of the year in which was appointed. To say the same thing that the state code said, which, which is um by the expiration of their term. As defined by the Code of Virginia, which gives until December thirty-first. And possibly an extension if the circuit court. Has a case that needs more. So we would need to, obviously, we'd need to um. Publish a public hearing, so it would probably happen in December, the regular meeting in December, if you all agree that we should go ahead and. Make that change.
Your recommendation, correct?
Yes.
I'm hesitant to ask the question, but have you spoken with the individuals who have volunteered to serve?
No.
Do we want to?
Well, we're hoping that um. I would, I would, I would think that as a, as a homeowner, I wouldn't want to have to wait forty-five days. So we're hoping that most people would, um, you know, invoke their. Would waive that right to the forty-five day, we can, we include a notice that they would sign, and they could get an earlier hearing. So it is quite possible that they could finish by that date, but it's also possible that they may not. So rather than break our own code, we thought we should be proactive and.
We're getting illegal language to. Compensate or to, to protect that.
Right.
While we want it, on the uh subject, these uh. Members of this Board of Equalization, they are compensated, correct?
Correct.
Uh, what is, what is the compensation? Does anybody know?
I think it's thirty-five, is what I'm thinking of.
I thought it was. I think it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
For that.
Sure, yeah, okay, yeah, hundred and thirty-five, not thirty-nine. I was, I was, somebody told me it was thirty-five.
It's a big difference.
It's not a lot, really, true.
I believe it's a hundred and thirty-five, unless, of course, you all, um, that's, I think it's in the. The notice, the resolution one oh, one hundred for the um. Appointees, the amount is listed in there, unless, of course, you all choose to change it, that was the amount that it was. Last time you have a board.
I'm sure they're gonna earn it.
Oh, yeah. Nobody's standing in line to do it.
Okay, any, any questions for Ms. Branch?
Let's make that.
Go ahead and proceed with your recommendation in December.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Ms. Karina Funkhauser to talk about uh. Budget transfer.
It's no documentation on that, correct?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board.
Good evening.
Um. I um did send an email about this to Mister Ashcroft, and I think he forwarded to all the members. Um, I am requesting to use three thousand dollars for my part-time line item. Budget to increase the salary of one of my deputies. The deputy was hired to process business license and meals, business licenses and meal sex. The workload has increased because business license renewals and food and beverage tax returns can no longer be submitted online. All forms must be submitted on paper and manually processed. The deputy has collected over two hundred and fifty emails from business owners. These business owners will receive their business license renewal and business personal property tax return via email. And this will save the county printing and postage expense. The deputy's duties have expanded exponentially, and she is the primary person responsible for personal property. The deputy spent an enormous amount of time with admin to correct problems with the DMV download. She recognized the bill codes for West Point residents were not updating correctly. And that the count status was being incorrectly changed from active to inactive. Admins provided no user manual for personal property, and on her own initiative. Um, she has created detailed instructions with screenshot, screenshot. For creating a business account, issuing a business license, renewing a business license, creating a food and beverage account. Processing a food and beverage return and issuing a personal property abatement. And these instructions are in my office's shared drive for everyone's reference. I'm not in, requesting an increase to my budget. I'm pressing a transfer of three thousand dollars from my part-time employee budget to increase her salary. Increase the salary of this deputy. This would bring her salaries um two thousand below the midpoint for this salary grade. Recently, the board acknowledged the difficulty in hiring and retaining qualified employees. In today's labor market and allowed Sheriff Walton to reallocate a portion of his budget to increase the starting salaries of new deputies. And I am requesting the same consideration. Thank you.
Question, gentlemen?
It's the same letter you sent out about two months ago?
Yeah, it was a few weeks ago.
Same identical request.
Yes, but he said I had to present it to the board.
So if you take the money out of there, then you can't hire a part-time?
No, I still, I haven't been able to hire a part-timer, I just hired one a few weeks ago. I contacted the high school in King and Queen, or not King and Queen, in West Point and high school in West Point. On the high school in West Point and the high school in King Lane to see if they had a high school student who could work a few afternoons a week doing data entry. And um neither could provide me with the name or, and then other people applied and. You know, I didn't interview him, because one lived in Warsaw, and I thought, oh, they're just applying to. Because they have to apply for so many jobs, no one's gonna drive a Warsaw to King William to work for fifteen dollars an hour, so. I just did recently hire one, but I mean, it's been, I haven't been able to hire a part-timer since summer. So that's like pretty much with, you know, on a part-time person.
Is the part-time difficulty related to uh benefits of a full-time employee?
I, I just think that it's the labor market. You know, it's just so hard, people don't apply, or they want, you know, more money, you know, they can go to mechanics' bell and work at, you know. Target for seventeen dollars an hour. I mean, it's nicer, you get to work during the day, you don't have to work weekends, and nights, you don't have to stand on your feet. But, I mean, it's just a very hard labor market.
So this is basically a. Three thousand dollar increase in salary that will carry over year after year.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
But it will not change your workload.
No.
Our workload is already increased. I just imagine.
It's not gonna reduce the workload, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You have to maintain.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I, I, you know, so. You have a hard time filling the part-time position.
And I, I was unable to fulfill, fulfill, you know, fill a full-time position. And then I didn't go back and try and refill it, because I don't know what's gonna happen if I'm hiring a reassessor or not, you know, I'm putting together my budget for next year. I said, but, you know, if. This deputy was to leave, I would be in a real bind, and I don't know how I could hire someone or how I could get the amount of work she gets done by the time I was able to train someone. I mean, it would be a huge. So it's not only just, it's like a retention also.
And part of her responsibilities were personal property, correct?
Uh, she was hired to do business licenses and meal sex, and now she's like the primary person for personal property. I go to her constantly, what about this? What about this?
Which it sounds like we still may have some problems sweating around out there with personal property.
Oh, we do.
Okay.
We do. I mean, we've worked with admins as much as we could about the DMV download. Yeah. And we're learning things, and you know, so we have a bunch of notes when we do the book next year, make sure you check this, make sure you check this, go back and do this. You know, it's just, it's a learning process, and like I said, they provided no manual. Uh, how are we supposed to do these things? I mean, and so now we have references, if I was in the office by myself, I could go on the R drive. And look at the little pictures of how to issue a business license so I could help somebody.
I get it, I, I, I don't really have an issue with it, I mean. Because again, leaving the budget in part-time isn't helping you build a part-time position, right?
No.
And then your deputy is, is picking up the slack, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's pretty common practice in professional environments, provide somebody like that.
And it's not, and like, and I started out almost two years ago, I was like, oh, my office is so understaffed. But it's not just my office, it's, you know, every department here seems like they just have more work than they can ever get done.
So what, what is the salary of that uh position currently?
I currently. It is thirty-seven, four ninety-two. And the midpoint for this position, wait, I have that here, no. The midpoint is forty-one, nine eighty-three.
How many years of experience?
Three. But she came, you know, from banking background, so. And she's incredible with spreadsheets and just, you know, some people just can look at things and get them, and she's one of those people.
All right, gentlemen, uh.
I think y'all know how I feel, I don't agree with it in midterm.
I don't either, not in midterm.
Budget, we're getting ready to head there.
And it's gonna be an AS, more than likely for another salary increase for this individual in the next budget.
That's speculation, Mr. Garber.
The future.
Well, I ain't, I ain't going there with you, I see us. Or. For her to be asking for the money back in the part-time. But I, I don't agree, but I, 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 I think.
It's a majority.
Well, look, I, I, I think between the two offices, we need to make sure that they've got what they need to carry out the mission, so, you know, um. As far as the commissioner and the treasurer, so on, so. Um, and I've asked. Miss Funkhauser before to, you know, let us know what she needs to carry out the mission, so uh.
I like your phraseology, then, Mr. Miskowski. The mission. That's what it's all about, right?
So I, I, I would then make the motion that we. Somehow, so I, I, I would then make the motion to be approved, and wherever it goes, it goes.
I'll take the luxury of seconding it. Any discussion, gentlemen? We have a motion seconded, Ms. Branch, should we call the vote? Me.
Mr. Hodges?
Nay.
Mr. Garber?
Nay.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Chairman Warren?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks very much.
And uh, last, we have Resolution twenty-two, one-on-one. Ms. Branch. We should try to get you all. One after the other, sorry.
They said tonight, um, you should have in your packet that was given to you a resolution. Um, this is initiating the amendment to chapter eighty-six. And referring uh, such amendment to the planning commission for the recommendation.
Well, okay, well, I'll make the motion without the resolution, so.
Motion made properly seconded, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Chairman Warren?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Skalskal will defer to you on your comment about, let's. I would like to go ahead and, and try to see what we can talk about uh, with the Treasurer's Office situation. I have been in contact, I haven't personally been in an office to talk, because I don't want to take away her time, but I'm aware. That numerous opportunities for people to come work part-time have been turned down or determined not to be practical.
Several times.
Because of uh. Uh, people need, the, the people that can do the job. Will do the job, need that full-time benefit package. I can understand in this environment, this fiscal environment, that uh, not having health insurance. Uh, is gonna be a major detractor to try to get quality people in that office. Mr. Hudgens, what is the man, what is the manpower? The numbers? The treasurer is the treasurer, who, how many other positions do you know offhand?
Or which off?
Treasurer.
The treasurer's office? Who's in there now?
No, how many are authorized?
Oh, um, besides the treasurer, one full-time. And one part-time, that's great.
And recon, the person that was handling reconciliation has been moved, so that manpower, that.
Right.
That person came off of those books.
Right.
Okay. Do we have a delta on what, from a part-time? Salary to a full-time with benefits would be roughly, not to the penny?
Not, no.
Ms. Colton? Do you know what the delta would be from a part-time to a full-time?
Plus benefits?
Ms. Brown is, Ms. Brown.
It would include benefits.
Let's refine that number, let's, let's bring that back to the work section, I'll do that. Crunch it.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it does warrant attention. Before things get out of hand. Okay, Mr. Hudgens, uh. Administrative matters, anything stand out?
I don't have much to add, I think we. The biggest thing is that uh, the reassessment notices are going out, as we've discussed, they're. Uh, set to go out on Friday, the second, and so um. We should be, start receiving calls soon after that, we've got, gonna have. Uh, one number for people to call, but three separate phones, uh, we hope to have them set up. Within this uh, room, as well as the reassessment office. Uh, so we can field as many phone calls at a time as we can, uh. Mr. Pearson has uh. Dedicated whatever it takes as far as manpower to hear everyone and uh, set everything up. Um. Besides that, you've got the reports, uh, is there anything that stands out to you? I saw that the building uh, permits have slowed uh, somewhat, um. Uh, real estate market's gone down a little bit. But. I think it was the slowest month of inspections of the year, and that's still, from what I recall and working in the department, a very high number. They're still quite busy.
The uh. I've been checking with Manga Hick on their statistics. Versus the reported, can you please ask Chief Reeves to uh, look into that?
Okay.
I know that for November, I'm gonna be interested to see what happens for November, because those boys and girls have been hauling. I'm hearing, I'm hearing uh, sirens in the middle of the night. And it may be you stationed one, but I give them the benefit, but please, uh.
I'll check.
We need to do a better job of the, the reporting from Manga Hick, and I assume uh, West Point.
We definitely look into that, I know. I've heard in the past that um. The system that we use to record calls and callouts uh. Can use refining, and I think part of the redistricting process and getting the right stuff into the computer system is gonna help that tremendously.
Can Chief Reeves physically see Manga Hicks' data? That, that was an issue, I know.
I can't confirm that right now.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, gentlemen?
Doing comments, sir?
Uh. Yes, Mr. Hodges.
Specifically on the.
Step right up there, Mr.
There you go, we'd have volunteered, thanks, Bill.
Yeah, that'll work, yeah, the only thing I, I have to add, I think everything's been covered, uh, is it, they fee for the payment to the Board of Equalization is in the resolution, it's a hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah.
Per day.
From meeting, I think, is the way it works. I told you, they'll learn it.
Oh, yeah. And there is training, correct, Mr.?
Yeah.
There's, is it in Richmond or online, or do you know how that works?
Um, last time, I think it was in COVID, and it was online, but I'm not sure, we need to confirm it, but I would assume it's in person now.
And who is the focal point for maintaining um, a liaison effort for this board? I mean, Ms. Branch would be.
Yes.
To facilitate and coordinate. Just add it to your list of duties. All right, Mr. Miskowski?
Um, the other thing I've got tonight is just, you know. Rid large, all over the country, there's a lot of unease, there's a lot of fear, there's, there's just seems to be a lot of anger out there, and a lot of, a lot of bad things precipitating from that, and. I've said this before in, in times like this, and, and I'll, I'll say it again, you know, when, when it, it's really easy to get caught up in that, but. Let's all, let's all remember um, to take time to check on each other, and uh, and in doing so, let's, let's take the time to, to take care of each other too, and take care of ourselves.
Pretty good. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, everybody, for coming, looks like we've got a big crowd, a lot of issues to cover, thanks everybody for coming. Don't seem to have too many people online anymore, I don't know if it's. Just too hard to get in or what, um. Hope everybody had a real nice Thanksgiving, I know I did, so. My entire family, hope everybody else did too. Keep moving, looking for Board of Equalization, hope we don't have too many issues.
How many weeks in Hawaii?
Three. Just got back, and then the volcano explodes yesterday.
Well, you wanted to be there.
Did you want to be there?
Yeah, yes.
Nothing like a good volcano.
He would have thought it was in his honor.
Mr. Garber?
I wanna congratulate the King William County Football Cavaliers. Uh, on a successful year, they didn't win the state championship, but they went deep in the playoffs.
Hard to do, as it turns out.
Yeah, and uh. I know, uh, Mr. Greenwood mentioned this in the last meeting. Uh, I think that we probably need to have some discussions if, if we're gonna look at any options uh. For the library, maybe construction of, or. Maybe looking at other options other than uh, how we're being served now. And happy belated Thanksgiving to everybody. And thank everybody for coming.
And following up, finishing up, uh. Hope everyone, as with everyone else, had a good uh, Thanksgiving holiday. Um. I'm, I'm in, I'm, I'm torn between the, the four-wheeler. Situation and the right personal property, I mean, uh. Right for uh, to expect a reasonable area for quiet. And relaxation, how do you balance those, it's gonna be a difficult situation to, to. It's gonna require some, some give and take from both sides, I'm afraid. Um. I'm gonna ask Mr. Kalaven. Since this is your first uh, visit with us. Any final comments from you?
No, it's very generous of you, I appreciate you all having me, um, a pleasure to be sitting with you this evening.
Great. And if I could get a motion to convene and close meeting?
Get it, sure, Mr. Chair, I move the reconvening and closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty, uh, two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one of the Code of Virginia to consider a personnel matter. Involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions, the BOE in this case. And in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight eight of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel on a specific legal matter. Regarding a possible conflict of interest requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel. Second, thank you.
Have a motion properly seconded, let me finish the discussion, Ms. Branch.
Ms. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Chairman Warren?
Aye.
Yourself?
I believe, right?
If we get a motion to reconvene in open session?
Move, just.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Chairman Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I made, we approved that one.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Chairman Warren?
Aye, and if we could get the.
Ms. Ms. Chairman, uh, Resolution twenty-two dash one hundred, recommendations of appointments to the Kingman County Board of Equalization. And we have, I need to read the whole thing, just appointments.
All right.
Just the.
Just a point.
Uh, first district, we have Sandra Willis, second district, we have Vincent Gaines. Third district, we have Sergio Tesonari, fourth district, we have John Turnage. Fifth district, we have Gene Greenwood, alternate number one, we have Fred Kraus, uh, on this twenty-eighth day of November twenty-twenty-two.
Very good. You want a motion to pass?
Some is. That was the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, seconded, Mr. Garber. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Chairman Warren?
Aye, like you get a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, check.
Excuse me. Motion made, probably second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, good evening, gentlemen.
Yes. Good to stay.
Get some water.